For those in the audience here at the municipal building, would you please rise and join me in opening the meeting with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal, infinite, and just as for all.
In the way of a few reminders, since this is a Zoom meeting as well as a live meeting here at the township building, I'd like to ask if anybody on Zoom wants to have a comment on any of the items on the agenda, they should, what's it called, chat, chat with the moderator and we'll get those messages. For everybody here in the, in the building, I'd ask you if you're, if you have cell phones, if you make sure they're on silent so we're not interrupted. And lastly, for those who are in the building, we would like everybody to sign in. So we have a record of who's attending. The signing sheet's on the table. You can do it anytime during the meeting or before you leave. Oh, I guess, and one other thing, if anybody is presenting or has comments here in the building, would you please come to the center microphone? I think that's the better one as far as picking up your messages. Okay. Before we get into tonight's agenda, we have a couple regular members that are absent this evening. So I'm going to ask that Mrs. Will and Mr. Caldas be voting members for this meeting. That will make a full group of seven of us. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which is, was on October 14th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second that.
I have an amendment.
Oh.
On page two of the minutes, I like a gender correction in paragraph five, please.
I apologize, Mrs. Byrne.
Thank you.
I'll change my motion to include that amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Deiter, that we approve the minutes of the October 14th meeting as corrected to change the gender of Mrs. Burns from Mr. Burr. Mr. Beck, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Garringer? Aye. Mrs. Will?
Aye.
I don't think he's, he's not a voting member tonight, Mr. Garrett.
He was at the meeting, though.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Deiter?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
So that would be seven, eight, zero?
Seven, zero?
Seven, zero.
Nope, eight, eight, zero.
All right, the first plan for review is a sketch plan and preliminary plan waiver request for Kellogg Company at 2050 Yellow Goose Road. Do we have anybody in the audience to present or on Zoom?
Hi, this is Joe Minor from R2 on behalf of Kellogg's.
Hey, Joe, you want to walk us through the description of the plan?
Sure.
Project?
Kellogg's is proposing to do an addition in the rear of the building. It's adjacent to the previous addition. It was done a couple of years ago. You can see on the plan, there is a, an addition attached to the main building in the lower left, keep going down, there you go. And then slightly up and to the right, there's a garage building where there will be drop off. This building is intended to process raw sugar into liquid sugar for use for coatings on the crispy crunchies that Kellogg makes there. And then they will potentially be exporting some of that out to other industries in the area. You see the two large tanks, which will be used to store raw sugar that's brought in on trucks, and three tanks that will be used to store liquid sugar, various degrees of thickness and concentration. To do this, we're going to be relocating some of the paving back there, although the entire area back there is pretty much gravel and broken paving with a section of better maintained paving through the center where they currently bring trucks around the back to store trailers and do some truck turnarounds in that area. The circulation was designed so that they will be able to maintain their truck, truck traffic back there. Emergency vehicles will be able to fully access it, just as they do today. And stormwater has been designed in order to accommodate the requirements of the ordinance by means of an underground bed underneath the new, new paving.
There you go. Okay. Anybody on the planning commission have a question about the scope of this project? Any clarification? Okay.
No.
Now?
And we are here tonight because we have requested a formal waiver of the land development process. We've had previous discussions with staff regarding this. We've come to a tentative agreement that it could be brought before you for consideration. We will be providing a contribution towards improvements along Yellow Goose Road. There was a cost estimate that was submitted with the application that is, I guess, under review by the township engineer to the amount of $68,285 of a contribution towards Yellow Goose Road improvements.
Okay. I guess I want clarification here. Is this just a modification to bypass the preliminary plan? Or is it a total land development waiver?
It is a waiver of preliminary and final land development.
Okay.
Conditioned on submission of a stormwater management plan and a fee in lieu of contribution for road improvements to Yellow Goose Road, and a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan waiver fee. All right, I'm sorry, preliminary plan waiver, fee.
Okay, so, I mean, that caught me a little bit by surprise because the agenda only said preliminary plan waiver, not final plan. Do you know, has there been any waivers for small developments on this property before?
Yes, there has.
And what was the, wasn't there verbiage associated with that regarding, wasn't there verbiage associated with that waiver?
There was, we did some research and there was a planning commission recommendation that the next project go through the land development. We did discuss that with members of the planning group and we feel that we can capture both additions through stormwater management plan, which we do require to be recorded.
Okay, then when this waiver is granted, if it's granted, and we put that verbiage on the plan again, so that the next time some de minimis plan comes in, we can have that option?
If that is the wish of the planning commission, you can so, add that to the, add that to the.
It's been our history and I'm not sure why we defer from it. I'm open to any other thoughts.
We've done that because some of these small projects that come in on, on bigger sites, it seems like we get multiple small projects over the years and sometimes we, we would, it would merit having a master plan done from time to time. So we know what's coming, what's happening. Yeah, so I would agree with you, Jim. I am not clear again, we are waiving the final plan?
Yes, the request is a waiver of preliminary and final, the final land development.
So they can build right from this?
They would have to go through the stormwater management plan process, complete that and record the stormwater management plan and then they can go through.
But they wouldn't come back with a final plan for final approval?
That is correct. The only time they would come back to the planning commission is if they would need any modifications or waivers of stormwater management. And the planning commission would then review those and provide a recommendation to the board.
And staff's comfortable with that because of the scope of the project being so small?
Yes, sir.
And we do not believe that we will require any waivers based on the design that we've completed. We, we currently have a set of drawings that are almost ready to be submitted and pending the outcome of this meeting and the supervisors' meeting next week, we will be submitting the plans in their entirety with stormwater management included.
The no final plan gets recorded, just the stormwater management plan gets recorded?
That's correct.
We would be willing to record the entire, it's like a five-page construction set, if that would help with your decision.
That's just different to me, waiving a final plan. I don't know. I'm interested in the other experience of the commissioners on that.
Mr. Fullerton, Mr. Rohr, if I can offer, we've had similar projects in the past. One of the biggest contributors or one of the biggest factors that we look at from a staff and engineering perspective, and I don't want to, I don't want to speak for Scott, but he, he was heavily involved with the discussions with Joe, Mr. Obermeyer and everybody else from the Kellogg's team. This project is occurring over already impervious area. So from a, from a standpoint, Mr. Fullerton did say it was de minimis. Yes, it's fairly de minimis in the scope, the overall scope of the facility at Yellow Goose Road. But in terms of stormwater management, nothing was done for the previous project, nothing was done. So we wanted to capture that and this one under the stormwater management ordinance. Additionally, we do require stormwater management plans to be recorded. So we feel we can capture both additions with, under the recorded stormwater management plan.
I mean, it makes sense. I just.
And we, we have, it has gone through, we have a number of projects that have similar scope and nature where staff has recommended a waiver of land development because it was de minimis and it was going over already impervious area.
Yeah, I have no objection to that. I'm just, it just seems like this was presented in a different way than the other ones were. I think the other ones were actually a waiver of land development, period. And it's fine if you want to label it this way, John, I don't have a problem with that. But I want them find, I want to be assured that somewhere the conversation we're having about future small projects may require land development.
Understood.
And where would that be recorded? If we don't have a plan recorded for this work, where will it be recorded for next?
In your recommendation to the board, I would, if that's, if that's your will, I would recommend you place that in your motion to the board and staff can take that up to the board and stress to them the importance that the planning commission feel is necessary to get any additional projects captured in land development.
Okay, and if the supervisors agree that that's something we want to do, where will it be captured? Not just on the minutes of a meeting, right?
It will, it will be captured in the board's motion and then it would be a note on the stormwater management plan.
Okay, that's, that's the bottom line. It's going to be recorded. It's going to be on something that's recorded. Not in a filing cabinet. Okay, I'm fine.
Scott, do you have anything to add?
Just to provide clarity that the, the stormwater management plan will be recorded and if you would like that note to be added, like John said, I would suggest that you make that part of your, part of your motion. And, and, and for clarity also, like, when the plans come in, if, if they, per the ordinance, trigger a land development plan, they would have to go through the process like this one, this one did. This one would have, by the ordinance, required a land development plan, but because of the nature of it, it was determined that it could go, it could go this way. So that's why you're making a recommendation on its processing tonight as far as the preliminary and final plan go. So they would be caught in the future, the same way this one was caught and it still came to you and, and allowed for that discussion.
Yeah, I think the purpose behind our, our past and the current note is that we want to let people know that there's been small plans that really haven't gone through land development. Roll of steps. So that's enough to say that.
And I think anymore the process, a stormwater management plan goes almost through the same process as the land development anymore. It doesn't go to the county, but it would still go through a, a review. We look at the basic zoning and subdivision issues that go along with it when it comes in. And then the whole, the entire plan is recorded. What you used to lose in the past was that the, the stormwater plans weren't recorded. They got done and they sort of, they sort of went away and it was, it was hard to find them again. But we have in the last couple of years started to require that the entire stormwater management plan is recorded.
Okay, does anybody in the audience have any comments on this plan or questions? Any further discussion from the commissioners? Then I'm ready for a motion on the Kellogg's project.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors' approval of waiver of the preliminary plan and final plan for the Kellogg's project subject to having this stormwater management plan, I guess, approved and reviewed by staff and other staff comments, and also the comment that, that the applicant needs to be aware future projects may require a full land development plan.
Second?
I'd also like to add to that motion that we, that they're going to be providing the fee in lieu of contribution for road improvements and providing the fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application.
So amended.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Deiter?
No, Mrs. Byrne.
Oh, Mrs. Byrne, sorry. You're, you're, I have Byrne written here.
You're going to be a man before you leave.
That we recommend approval of the waiver of the preliminary plan and final plan for Kellogg Company subject to the completion of a stormwater management plan that would include recording of the note about future development, triggering land development, also providing a fee in lieu of contribution for road improvements to Yellow Goose Road and providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee. Mr. Beck, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Garringer?
Aye.
Mrs. Will?
John, he's not, he's not a voting member tonight.
Aye.
I apologize. I thought you had a, I thought you had appointed all three as.
No, because Matt's on the call.
Okay.
Mrs. Will?
We're trying.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Deiter?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Gary, seven to zero. All right, the next plan for review is a sketch plan and preliminary plan waiver for Yellow Goose Properties at 3101.
Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Joe.
Have a good evening.
More palm trees. I saw that palm tree waving in the back.
Yeah. Got a Corona on his hand.
Andy, there is a laser pointer up there if you need it on the podium, up on the table.
It's only if I'm smart enough to work it.
On the side, there's a button to turn it on.
Good evening. Andrew Miller with R2 Associates. Be presenting on a few projects this evening. This is the first of several exciting projects that we have to discuss this evening. Yellow Goose Properties, the project team for this is Yellow Goose Properties, Mike O'Brien and Eric Scott. And I believe Mike O'Brien is on Zoom. Mark Stanley and Claudia Shank with McNeese Wallace and Nurk, I believe they're also on Zoom. And Craig Malott with Traffic Planning and Design is also on Zoom. So that team can help answer any of the questions you may have about this project this evening.
And Andy, I don't mean to interrupt, but I want to point out to the planning commission in their packets, I did receive an email from the neighbor, Ms. Mrs. Emily Yoder, and I believe she is on Zoom as well. She had raised some concerns and before you get started, Andy, so you're at least prepared to address those. Her email, her concerns are the turning lane could cause cars to block their driveway. And for reference, they own the property, her and her husband own the property that's at the corner of Harrisburg Pike and Yellow Goose Road, opposite of the project site. They also are concerned that the turning lane may enable straightbound cars to speed past turning cars. They asked that, they need assurance that their property line will not be affected anyway. As they already mentioned, they absolutely have no room to spare on their side. They did have a discussion with Mr. O'Brien about the widening of the road. And according to her email, Mr. O'Brien commented that all the widening will occur on the project side and not on their property side.
Anything else, John?
I don't believe so, but if, if I missed anything, Mrs. Yoder, I'm sure she'll, if she is still on the Zoom call, she can add anything that I missed.
Thank you. So we are here for a brief presentation on the sketch plan and also discussing a waiver of preliminary plan requirements for this project. So just to begin, it is a corner property located at 3101 Yellow Goose Road, the intersection of Yellow Goose and Harrisburg Pike, 2.84 acres in size in the E Enterprise Zone. Currently on the site, there is a storage building that's used by Oak Tree Development over here on the west side of the property. And at one time, there was a residential structure on the property, but that's been demolished. On the northern side of the property, for reference, is, on the northern and the eastern side, is the Tomlinson Bonberger Landscape Company and their storage yard and office facility. On the south is Yellow Goose Road and as John mentioned, the Yoder property as well. And we'll address the driveway and widening in a moment. And then to the west of the property is Harrisburg Pike with a mix of residential uses and commercial uses as well on the opposite side. So the proposal is for a single-story daycare facility, approximately 10,000 square feet in size, which is a permitted use in this district. We're proposing 36 passenger vehicle parking spaces on the south side of the building. Also an outdoor fenced playground area on the east side of the building and two surface stormwater BMP areas, as shown in the light green hatch on the west side of the building and parking. As I stated, the existing barn will remain and the existing driveway to the barn will also remain out on Harrisburg Pike. That's located right there. The land, we have landscaping and screening provided per the ordinance on all the adjoining property lines. And we also intend to place some low shrubbery along the parking lot to shield any headlights that might shine out into Yellow Goose Road. We also have a dumpster enclosure accounted for. And as discussed, a left turn lane into the facility on Yellow Goose Road. So anyone coming down north or south on Harrisburg, turn on Yellow Goose and could turn left into the parking lot. We have a fair amount of stacking lane in the parking lot area for folks that may be dropping off or picking up their child. And all the widening will be done from the center line to the north, so on the Yellow Goose property, the daycare property, and then any additional right of way may need to be obtained from Tomlinson Bonberger as well to accommodate those turning lanes. So at this time, there's no overall widening, shifting of the lanes, shifting of the roadway that would impact the Yoder property to the south. It's also our understanding that the user will operate during daytime hours, so typically 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. No weekends or holidays are planned for at this time. Any questions on that before I proceed into the preliminary waiver? As mentioned, we are requesting a waiver of the preliminary plan to, to bypass preliminary plan requirements and go right to final plan requirements. We feel that due to the size and scope of the project, it's fairly uncomplicated, straightforward. There's no subdivision of land, no utilities or public lands to be dedicated. So it's a fairly simple project that we could achieve in, in just a final plan submission. So we are requesting a preliminary plan waiver. With that, I'd happy to entertain any questions. As mentioned, we do have our project team on the, on Zoom. So if there's any specific questions, I'm sure they'd be happy to jump in and answer anything I'm not able to this evening.
Andy, just curious, if you look at the front of your, front of your property on both Harrisburg and Yellow Goose, there looks to be two black lines and I'm wondering, does some of that have to do with changing property lines or rights of way or what, what do they both mean?
That's just the difference between the way that the property boundary deep plotted, the deep plot of the property versus right of way lines on a conceptual, more of a graphic representation at this time. So when we have the final survey done, that'll nail down all the right of way lines for Harrisburg Pike and Yellow Goose Road. And if any additional right of way needs to be dedicated to the township on Yellow Goose, that will be done as well.
Yeah, I thought it had something to do with that, but when the two lines crossed there, at the intersection, I, I couldn't follow.
Yeah.
If you remember, I think that there was a piece of either this property on the other side of the road at one time or the other way around. Years ago, we had a plan come in and they actually moved property lines because the road, when it got bent, it used to be more straight there. But anyway, that's another subject.
I have a question about circulation, traffic circulation. And my concern is Yellow Goose Road intersection with Harrisburg Pike, that at some point, there may be a need on Yellow Goose Road for a left-hand turn. With the traffic signal and some backup traffic occurring at different times now, you almost see people trying to create two lanes coming out of Yellow Goose Road. And it's a difficult thing to, to try and solve and readily off, off top of my head, the only thing that comes to me is if the traffic pattern for this property was one way in off of Harrisburg Pike and one way out on Yellow Goose Road. And in doing that, you, you've opened up the intersection and the neighbor's driveway wouldn't be blocked by vehicles waiting to turn left into the property. And I don't know if there's been any thought about that or if there'll be a, a traffic study that would look at those turning movements, but you know, Yellow Goose Road is getting more traffic on it. What might be an issue as time goes on?
And Craig Malott is on the line from Traffic Planning and Design. And I know that they've already done some preliminary work with this intersection. If he could be given authority to speak, he could probably comment on that.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. As Andy mentioned, Craig Malott with TPD, we're doing the transportation engineering on this project. We will be preparing a transportation impact study that looks at the issues that were raised with respect to access. Yellow Goose Road is a township road. Yellow Goose Road is a township road, Harrisburg Pike is a PennDOT road. So we'll be interfacing with both PennDOT and the township to kind of discuss those issues. I can say PennDOT takes a pretty strong stance on corner properties like this where you have frontage along two roads. Their standard indicates that in cases like this where you've got frontage along a higher order road like Harrisburg Pike and a lower order road like Yellow Goose Road, that they can limit access to what they believe to be the lower order road. So I suspect as we go through the PennDOT process, they're not going to want any access to Harrisburg Pike at all because it's a higher order road and just because the amount of frontage is available to us in relation to the Harrisburg Pike, Yellow Goose Road intersections limited. So I suspect PennDOT's going to want the entrance to be located where we have it shown. As far as the turn lane that's shown on Yellow Goose Road, that's, this is just the initial sketch. We did submit this to your traffic engineer and to PennDOT. I'm sure we'll get some comments back in terms of how that left turn lane should look. We might go to do like a two-way left turn pattern, or what some people call a suicide lane in that area instead of a dedicated left turn lane to get the property on the other side, the ability to use it at all as well. So there may be a couple of solutions that we can look at to address some of the concerns on the south side. But we've got to go through the process. We'll do that as we enter into land development.
Yeah, and I know that PennDOT would rather have you use the road of lesser intensity. But with the circulation at the intersection, the neighboring property, I just hate to see you walk away without trying to do something in there that would give them a one-way in. And PennDOT might be more susceptible to the one-way in action coming off of Harrisburg Pike than it would if you tried a full intersection.
Yeah, understood. And when we go meet with, and the township will be represented, your traffic engineer will be there, Scott, and you'll be there, John Beck can kind of convey that. I'm actually more concerned that PennDOT's going to even let us leave the existing barn driveway. That's how rigid they've been recently with new access to state highways in this case. But we hear what you're saying, that it'll get fleshed out as we go through the traffic study process.
Okay, and Harrisburg Pike has a width in that area that would be wide enough for eastbound Harrisburg Pike to have a storage lane to turn into the property.
Yes, there is a left turn lane on Harrisburg Pike that turns into Yellow Goose Road today. Having another left off of that same lane is something that PennDOT doesn't often like to do, but it'll be part of the conversation that we have with the township and PennDOT during the scoping.
Thank you, Craig.
Andy, I don't know if you mentioned it, but you want to address the barn structure that's still there and why, why there's two accesses?
Sure. So we have, we've purposefully kept the daycare parking area and entrance and the existing storage barn entrance and turnaround area separated so that there is no cross-through traffic, flow-through traffic. You know, people kind of scooting through that barn driveway lane. Also, we anticipate that, you know, the current use of that Oak Tree Development is using it as a storage building for their own use. So the number of trips in that driveway is extremely low right now, and they intend to keep it that way. So we wanted to keep all of the traffic, like I said, separated between both of the users as well as knowing the type of traffic that the daycare would get versus what the storage building would get. That answer your question, John?
Just asking for clarification on the reasoning why.
And we shifted the driveway for the daycare as far east as we possibly could to try to get it away from the Harrisburg Pike driveway, intersection rather. So we have that shifted as far as we can reasonably get it.
And there's no interest, no, no conflict of two different types of businesses on the same property? They're both permitted in that zone and they can be on the same property?
That is correct.
Okay.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but you're adding an additional lane there on Yellow Goose. So in essence, that should decrease the stacking distance. Now you have two lanes that cars can stack in, one for left, one for right. Am I thinking wrong there?
Well, we are proposing a left turn lane into the driveway, into the daycare driveway.
That's a left turn in.
Correct. Yeah, left turn in.
Andy, this is, this is Craig again. To that point though, but beyond the left turn lane, as you approach the intersection, we have just what's a painted median today. We'll have to see how PennDOT responds to that, but there may be the opportunity to use that extra width as a left turn lane turning from Yellow Goose onto Harrisburg Pike. They, and that sometimes gets concerned about two lanes that stop control the intersections just because of some sightline interference. But there would be the opportunity to do that there if PennDOT's comfortable with it.
Yeah, I'd rather see the turning lane going that way than into your property.
Yeah, we're trying to make sure that, we're trying to make sure that someone turning the left into the daycare driveway doesn't cause someone behind them to back up to the, into the intersection. So it was more of a safety issue we're trying to address. And there may be, like I said, two-way left turn patterns, something that we can do different than what we've shown this plan to address access for the property across the street. So we'll talk it through with, and I don't want your traffic engineer to try to come up with some pollution.
Yeah, with where the driveway is to the neighbor property, that is going to be a challenge. Doesn't take, you're going to stack up and block their lane then.
And the only thing that I-
Things you're going to need to work on for the final plan.
Sure. And the only thing that I would offer as well as, you know, for those of you that are currently driving through that intersection, as I drive through it several times a day on my own, there's a lot of traffic right now there, there with State Road being closed. So, you know, at this time, with that closure going through there, it's like, wow, there's a lot of traffic here. I'm sure that'll be shifted when State Road reopens.
The Yoders have a nice property. It's a historic building on it. And I, I'd like to be able to do something that makes, you know, that property survive. And, you know, I'm not sure what it is, but to have somebody or anybody on that property backing onto Yellow Goose Road is not a good situation today. It's certainly going to be impacted by what happens with these other turning movements in the future. So I-
That's going to be your challenge to make sure-
Be nice to meet with him and talk to him.
He'll address that.
Yeah, and I guess I would just make the comment as, as we've done in the past regarding waiver of preliminary plan, that there is the risk if a final plan comes in and is not to our desires, that we may not recommend approval and you might have to go back and do it again. So just want to make sure you realize there's some risk of not going through the preliminary process, especially if there's-
Limited use?
You know, transportation or travel issues that have been brought up here. We'll be going over them again when you come in with final plan.
Yeah, if you own a house next to industrial, then otherwise, I think it should be a site that you can make work. For the applicant. Problem to rush hour use.
Can we check to see if Mrs. Yoder has any further comments? Too far away.
Yeah, I-
Go ahead, Mrs. Yoder.
I just want to say I appreciate the comments and concern genuinely from Mr. O'Brien, who I've been emailing with, and John Beck, who have both gone out of their way to make sure that we're included in this process. I also appreciate the comment about the historical value of our property. Just really quick background, we bought the property a little over a year ago, and we've been working very hard to renovate it and have many more plans, probably way more plans than we'll ever have money. But I do appreciate the consideration of our driveway. We've got four children, teenager that's going to be starting to drive soon. There's, there's at times quite a bit of in and activity in and out of our driveway. We're kind of between a rock and a hard place with the position of the house and the barn of what we can actually do with our driveway. You know, it is a bear, especially right now with the traffic to, to pull out and even worse to back out. But sometimes you have to back out because you weren't able to back in. So we definitely appreciate any consideration that not only would not make our situation worse, but may even make it better. So I just, I want to say that, you know, I appreciate being included in the process and we're very open to, to continue dialogue on this issue.
And I can assure Mrs. Yoder that we'll continue to communicate with her and as the plan evolves here. And I will tell you that in looking at the use in general here for this particular intersection, this is one of the more, I think, or less intensive uses that could occur at this, at this intersection within the enterprise zone, you know, which allows for light industrial. So, you know, when you look at the residential nature of the building that we're going to be doing there, and, you know, if you, if you look at Ugro today over on, on Noel Drive, we, which is across from our offices, that's, that although it's busy, it's not, it's not overwhelming. And I think that building's about 4,000 feet larger than this one. And I believe that this is probably, of all the choices of uses in this zone for development on this site, this certainly, I think, from a both aesthetic standpoint within the residential nature of some of the ordering properties and as well as the use itself, I think it's a good choice for this particular site.
The only thing I want to add is you're correct in that it's a good visual use for the property. But it's a fairly intense traffic generator at peak times. The morning drop-off, the evening pickups, you know, it has peaks to it that I'm sure the traffic study is going to identify. And we'll be able to see how often and to what extent the queuing off of Yellow Goose Road is going to occur.
All that'll be, all that'll be available when we, when we advance the traffic study that, that we'll be doing. So everybody will have that information.
Any further discussion from the planning commission members? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to have any input into this plan? If not, then I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver for Yellow Goose Properties per the provided sketch plan, subject to the applicant completing a final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of contribution equivalent to the preliminary plan application fee.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Danner, seconded by Mr. Polakowski, that we recommend approval of the preliminary plan waiver for Yellow Goose Properties, 3101 Yellow Goose Road, subject to the applicant completing a final land development plan and providing a fee in lieu of the preliminary plan application fee. Mr. Beck, please go.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldis?
Aye.
Mr. Danner?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero. Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
The next plan is the final plan and modifications for 701 Stony Battery Road. 701 Stony Battery LLC, which is actually 791 Stony Battery.
Good evening. Happy to be before you for the second time, Andrew Miller with Ritu Associates. I have with me this evening with 701 Stony Battery Road LLC, Gabe Clark and Aaron Rapucci, who are partners. And they can answer any specific questions that I am not able to cover. By way of a brief presentation and background on the project, we are here this evening to discuss the final land development plan for 791 Stony Battery Road, seeking a recommendation for plan approval as well as the requested modifications that we'll review. In May of 2020, we submitted the land development plan and have been working with staff and your engineer on technical comments since that time. In July of 2020, we conducted a conditional use hearing to permit the proposed facility to receive the heavy industrial classification specifically for a use exceeding 500,000 square feet of impervious surface for rail access. And thirdly, for daily truck deliveries in excess of 50. So the heavy industrial use for those three items, as you're aware, that requires a conditional use in the enterprise zone. That was then approved on August 5th. The conditional use was approved. So this is, do you have the color plan?
I do not.
Wasn't in my, was it in my PDF?
Is that me a PDF?
Yeah, the big one.
Let me check.
Even though, while John's finding that. This is a single parcel consisting of 19.9 acres with the address of 791 Stony Battery Road in the E Enterprise Zone. It's currently in existing agricultural use and also contains a farmhouse and a barn structure located at the northeast corner of Knoll Road and Stony Battery Road. Went to what's on the screen, with Stony Battery Road being north-south and Knoll Road being east-west. If you recall, immediately north of this project is a project entitled 701 Stony Battery Road, which I've been here before you on. North of that is a project entitled 601 Stony Battery Road, which is now under construction and actually nearing completion. So we're happy to see those projects advancing to the north of this one. On the, there it is.
I apologize. I didn't think you mixed up or combined your clients.
Don't tell them that. I put it all in one PDF to make your life easy. To the east of the property here is a rail line. And also to, on the east side of the property is PPL's large high transmission power line that runs north-south as well. On the south side, as I said, is, is Knoll Road. Immediately south of that is the KRM building, which is now completed as well. To the west side is Stony Battery Road, and the township boundary line runs down through the center of Stony Battery Road with residential properties to the west. We're proposing on this corner lot, a single structure, industrial building of 251,250 square feet. It will be a spec building similar to the other projects, whereas no user has been identified to date. The project will have 45 dock doors and 44 trailer spaces on the east side of the building, which you can see in the yellow and gray hatch. And we have 178 passenger vehicle spaces located on the western and the southern portion of the, of the property in the thin gray on the exhibit. We have landscaping and screening provided around the adjoining properties. And just one thing to note on the southern property, that is a small residential property that's existing. We have increased the buffer in the screening along that property line in an effort to try to shield any light or mitigate any noise that may come from the facility. The property will have an eight-foot wide asphalt pedestrian pathway that will parallel Stony Battery Road along the frontage. And the applicant has entered to pay a fee in lieu for any pathway construction along the southern side along Knoll Road. Should be that section down here. The fee in lieu of that amount will go to the township and assist them in a project they're currently working on to connect pedestrian pathways from Lynx Avenue, which is to the east of this project site, up to Kaufman Road and eventually connecting to the campus, the school campus. So we felt that that was a good use of funds. The, our Knoll roadside of the property and the way that the adjoining properties are to the east in the rail line are not- are not very conducive to a pedestrian pathway. So in discussions with staff, we felt that a fee in lieu to help make some other connection pieces was the, the smart choice for that. The site also has a, similar to the other projects, a fire pump house and a water tank for fire suppression purposes. And by way of access, we will have two access points for the site. We will have one on Stony Battery Road, located on the west, that will be for passenger vehicles, and one on the south along Knoll Road, which will accommodate trucks and passenger vehicles as well. By way of the conditional use, we did receive approval to have in excess of 500,000 square feet originally to, to have that heavy industrial classification. However, with some changes we've made to the site plan, we're actually underneath of that 500,000 square foot threshold right now. So by way of calculation and impervious coverage, we're only at 58% where there's an allowable 70%. So just to, to point that out as part of the conditional use. The applicant is also, as part of the conditional use, will enter into an agreement to pay a fee in lieu for the widening along Stony Battery Road. And that is consistent with, with what was done through staff's recommendations for both 701 and 601 projects to the north, so that the township can undertake the roadway project that I believe they're planning in that area for the next year or so. We have reviewed and responded to comments from your engineer from their letter dated September 8th. We resubmitted the beginning of November. And today, they just issued a, a fresh letter dated 12/9. I don't know if you have that in your packets or not, but we obviously have not responded to that letter yet. But in review of it, we can, we can comply with the items in that letter. Mr. Rapucci would like me to point out, there is the neighbors, the Geist property over here. Their building corner, the, the corner of their garage actually is over the property line. And Catalyst has been nice enough to grant them an easement around their building so that they can maintain access for maintenance or whatever they may need around that garage structure without trespassing illegally on a neighboring property. Currently, the approvals we have in hand are our NPDS approval from the Conservation District and DEP. We have the Sewage Planning Module Exemption Approval. We have approval from East Hemfield Township Water Authority, Lancaster Area Sewer Authority and the Township Emergency Management Services through Mrs. Garber. So before we move into waivers, I'd be happy to answer any questions on all of that information I just gave.
I, I have a question. The traffic engineer talks about a site distance on Knoll Road being interfered with by a tree on neighboring property. How do you propose to resolve that? Exit on Knoll Road, vehicles looking to the left into that smaller residential property. The traffic engineer notes that there's an existing tree that blocks vision. Are you aware of that?
You're, you're speaking on this residential property?
Yes.
Yeah. We are aware that the... The truck traffic at that location is to turn right and go out to Knoll Road. So I'm not sure if that existing tree is within our current clear site triangle. We did adjust our clear site triangle to only go to the, our property boundary. And that's actually one of our waivers is the location of that driveway that we have.
I would think for vehicles exiting your property onto Knoll Road, that it would be important for them to know if a vehicle is heading west on Knoll Road towards the intersection. And it seems from reading the traffic engineer's report that there's an obstruction to the view that is not on your property, obstruction is on a neighboring property. I kind of hate to discount that.
And that's something that we can discuss with the, with the engineer on that, with the traffic engineer. We can discuss it with the neighbor, I suppose, as well.
Yeah, I, whatever the resolution it would be, I would, you know, urge you to remove the obstruction.
Is it in the right of way?
Don't know. But it'd be in the site distance, site triangle.
I believe it's the tree right there.
It's probably that one.
Go to Google Streets, John.
And, and a question to staff. If I'm reading the reviews correctly, the township is satisfied with the asphalt on the township road as far as weight capacity issues?
Yeah, Perry Madonna's been involved in discussions about the widening and, and the roadway situation. And I believe the, the spec meets the township standards.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Now, on my short time on the board, I, I don't recall a project asking, you know, for approval with all these conditions. There's like 20, 23 of them, pages of them. I almost took a nap in between.
Yeah. We, we prefer not to have that many. So we've already been through a round of the comments with the engineer. And I have reviewed the, the letter very briefly today. However, since it just came in, a lot of those, I think, are small detailing items with stormwater and some things on the profiles and plans. I, I don't see anything in there that we can't get addressed with Scott and his staff.
We did provide a recommendation at the end of the letter that we felt it could go to the planning commission because as Mr. Miller said, they're mostly minor technical items that can be cleaned up on the plan more than wholesale design changes at this point.
Andy, Andy, can you go back to the clear site triangle issue real quick? The safe site stopping distance, what did you have there on the eastbound turn? I didn't catch that. I think I saw it on the plan that it was in excess of the required safe site stopping distance for the maneuvering area there, correct?
That is correct. We did go out and do site distance measurements at all the driveway locations. And we follow the PennDOT criteria for those, no matter what street they're on. And all the driveways did pass. I don't have the numbers right off the top of my head with me, but all the driveways passed the, the typical, you know, and we look at visual obstruction measurements, you know, the whole PennDOT criteria of, of how those are measured.
Just for the board's information, Dan and I were looking at it. And at that intersection looking east, 150 is required and 298 feet is provided. So in, in looking at that, I'd be more concerned about the safe site stopping distance than the actual clear site triangle. Especially with the trucks turning westbound with the driveway that they've provided. They're going to be sitting up higher. They'll be out past that tree, I believe, and they'll have plenty of site distance there.
I would agree with that, too. We've become less concerned sort of with clear site triangles, particularly on access drives or driveways to buildings. Streets, if it's a proposed public street, we look at that a little bit more. But safe stopping site distance is a more critical item as to whether or not it functions properly. And that's, that's the same type of thing that you would look at if, on a PennDOT permit for a new driveway for an HOP. They don't look at a clear site triangle. They look at the safe stopping site distance. And we use the same criteria that they would for those applications, so.
Certainly with the removal of the house and the barn, that's going to clean up the site, that intersection a lot.
Absolutely. And there actually have been, the township, just as another anecdote, the township did have concern with some existing fencing and shrubbery at the corner of Knoll Road and Stony Battery. And through Catalyst and, and the agent, they were able to work and remove some of that.
Not to be discounted, this site, clear site triangle is less about a vehicle looking for oncoming traffic as it is for a vehicle traveling, say, Knoll Road, to know that it's entering an intersection. It's, it's clearing an area to define it as there could be cross traffic. Versus driving down the road and then being surprised by a car coming out of nowhere. They both serve a purpose, but I agree that the site, actual site distance and stopping area is, is very crucial to not having an accident.
Okay. I'd like if you could walk us through the seven modifications briefly to make sure we understand.
Sure, absolutely. The modifications and waivers, and what I'll do is for your ease, I'll follow the order of the David Miller letter dated today. If you have a copy of that, December 9th, you do, great. First waiver of that, section 265, 43D, 1A to B, is with regard to the conditional use application and that the preliminary plan processing requirements, which we were in front of and received approval of. The next item is with regard to plan scale, 265, 54A1. That is for the plans to be drawn at a scale 10, 10 inches to, 10 feet to the inch. That additional scales can be allowed at the discretion of the township. We're just asking a modification to have some of the sheets at 60 feet to the inch to allow for overall views of the plan. The third waiver is with regard to paved sidewalks, section 265, 84A1B, whereby we're requesting modification to the sidewalk requirement to have a multimodal path along Stony Battery Road, along the frontage, and then a crosswalk along Knoll Road to connect to a future connection at some point. Next is section 265, 62A, and streets and sidewalk ordinance, 222, 541 and 222, 66B, where we are requesting a deferral of curbing installation requirement along Stony Battery and Knoll Road until such, until such time that the timing of the township project occurs. And additionally, that is part of the fee in lieu that's being posted for the widening along Stony Battery Road that was part of the conditional use approval. Next, streets and sidewalk section, 222, 511C4, where we're seeking a modification for the separation distance from the existing residential driveway and the smaller clear site triangle down to 63 feet and though of 100 feet. And that's just given to the fact of the location of the residential property to the east side. Number six is with regard to stormwater runoff, stormwater section 216, 16E, whereby when we analyze the stormwater from a pre-development to a post-development condition, that some of the runoff in the pre-development condition is being transferred to a different sub watershed in the post-development condition. This is an item where, just by way of stormwater management and the way we are able to do infiltration on the site and where we're able to discharge, sometimes the, the sub watershed area needs to be balanced. The next waiver as with regard to infiltration, loading volumes in a karst area, loading ratios, stormwater section 260, 14AC, where we are proposing a different impervious drainage loading ratio and total drainage area ratio for our stormwater basins versus what is outlined in the ordinance. So that, that is a requirement in karst geology to not direct all your stormwater to a very small area, which has the potential for a sinkhole or subsidence at some level.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And there was nothing else in the other comments that you need to discuss tonight?
No, I believe that's between us and staff or us and the engineer, we can comply with those items.
Are there any further questions or discussion from the commission members? Does anybody, any audience have any input on this plan? Okay, then I believe we need to deal with seven modifications and the final plan. Ready for motions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of modifications number one, two, three, five and six. Recommend conditional approval of modifications four and seven for the 791 Stony Battery Road Final Land Development Plan, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Second. Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Danner, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, three, five and six, and conditional approval of modifications four and seven, subject to staff and engineers' comments. Rebecca, please call.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Danner?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Okay, the modifications are recommended for approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Who was the second?
Mrs. Byrne.
Thank you.
Now for the plan, final plan? Approval or recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of 791 Stony Battery Road Final Land Development Plan, conditioned on resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Danner, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the final plan for 791 Stony Battery Road, subject to staff and engineering comments. Hold those, no, not in favor. John, please call the roll.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Danner?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the fourth plan for this evening. It's the revised preliminary plan and modifications for State Road Investors LLC, the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center in Brookside. Hello again.
Good evening. I'm Andy Miller with your two associates. Here on the third exciting plan this evening. Thanks, John. As stated here, on behalf of Oak Tree Development Group and Penn State Health, this is for the revised preliminary land development plan for the overall project. As introduced in the, the first plan this evening, our project team is on Zoom with Oak Tree Development Group. We have Mike O'Brien and Eric Scott with Traffic Planning and Design, Craig Malott, and with McNeese, Wallace and Nurk, Mark Sten... and with McNeese, Wallace, and Nurk, Mark Stanley, and Claudia Schenk. Purpose of our attendance on this plan this evening is to present the revised preliminary land development plan and seek approval of the revised plan and the requested modifications. Just by way of the background, as you're aware, we've, we've been in front of you for many different phases of the project. The original project went through rezoning in April of 2019. We presented a master plan for the project, which you see a rendering of on the screen, in September of 2019. In November of 2019, there was an ordinance created to vacate Old State Road and portions of State Road, which was enacted by the supervisors. And in December of 2019, the Township Board of Supervisors approved the preliminary land development plan as well as a subdivision plan, which realigned State Road, as shown on the graphic, and as well as performed a lot consolidation of a small residential parcel that we refer to as the McDermott parcel into the overall Brookside development on the east side of State Road. In March, the subdivision plan was recorded and subsequently stepped back in February. The final plan for Phase One, which is the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center, was recorded. So in September of this year, we submitted this revised land development plan, preliminary land development plan, which basically outlined a minor change to Phase Two, which is the Sheets site, which we've been before, before you on, and a wholesale change to the Phase Six area, which is the Enterprise Zone. If you could flip to the next PDF, John, please. Okay, go back. Just trying to bring up a plan with phases on. Phase Two, the Sheets, is this small area right here. I'll keep talking. That's okay. If you go back to the color render, I can talk off. Okay, and Phase Six is the north side of Swarun, Swarun running through the center of the, of the east side of the property. And then Phase Six being the Enterprise Zone on the north side of Swarun and this industrial facility here. So there, as part of this preliminary plan, there's two tracts of land. Essentially, there's the east side, which is east of State Road, north of Harrisburg Pike, and the west side, west of State Road, north of Harrisburg Pike. And the west side is completely Phase One, which is the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center. Focusing on the east side, that is a sixty-nine acre development, frontages on Harrisburg Pike and on State Road. And of that, the Enterprise Zone, which is the northeast quadrant, contains thirty acres of that. The former layout we had was three flex warehouse spaces, which totaled one hundred and forty-one square feet, one hundred and forty-one thousand square feet. Our new layout, as you can see on this, is one flex warehouse totaling two hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet. We've also updated some pedestrian circulation on the north side of Swarun and adjusted some of the accesses onto Yellow Goose Road. The next agenda item is that Phase Six, Phase Six plan, so I won't steal my presentation on that. We did receive a letter from David Miller Associates. Latest letter was dated November the thirtieth, and we can comply with any remaining open items in that letter. One thing that I will mention is the McDermott parcel was zoned residential, and that was actually rezoned at a hearing last week to campus zone. So now the entire east side of the Brookside development is all zoned to campus. We do have quite a few modification requests. These are all very similar to what was processed with the original application. I would be happy to step down through them if you wish. Just as a reminder, the preliminary plan is, is not a recorded plan, more of a planning tool in conjunction with our master plan. And it will be updated as we move forward with final plan phases.
There were eight modifications already granted, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So we're only talking about one new one tonight?
I, I don't have a letter or an application for the modifications, describes them, but Scott's letter has two modifications, one dealing with the perpendicular islands in the parking lot for the warehouse building. And is that something that's going on?
Yes, and that's the same modification request as part of this plan and will be also part of the next application for the Phase Six.
So our action today should be on two modifications?
That's the only one.
Correct, there's only one new modification for the preliminary. That is correct.
I'm looking at Miller's letter and it has one and two, one deal with the cover.
Yeah, but it says that they were approved previously.
Okay.
It's just a comment on the modifications, that's why it's in.
So you don't have to be reissued, okay.
And just by way of reference, that adjacent islands opposite each other on rows was also a waiver that was sought for the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center as part of that final plan.
And the reason for that was pretty much the shape of the island, the shape of the rows?
It has to do.
You can't line them up?
It has to do with shape of the rows, it has to do with breaking up the rows of space, spacing. It also has to do with introducing more landscaping throughout the planning island, so everything isn't so regimented. Adds an element of interest into, into the parking layout.
Does anybody in the audience have any input on this plan? Assuming we'll hear if there's anything from Zoom, I don't have to ask every time, John. Cindy, Cindy will let us know if anybody's on the chat.
There's, there's no comments on Zoom, Mr. Fullerton.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on the commission? Then I'm ready for a motion first on the modification.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modification request number one, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Polakowski, that we recommend approval of modification number one, subject to staff and engineers' comments. Mr. Beck, please.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Deter?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Modification recommendation is approved, seven to zero. And now for the revised final, revised preliminary plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we recommend to the supervisors approval of the preliminary plan, subject again to staff and engineer comments within ninety days of plan approval unless extended by the board.
Second. Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the revised preliminary plan for Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Deter?
Aye.
Mr. Polakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye.
Preliminary plan recommendation is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Next plan is the final plan and modifications for the Brookside Enterprise Phase Six.
Good evening. Joe Young with your two. Seeing if you're paying attention. Good evening again. Under Phase Six of the Brookside development for the final plan. Again, we have on the phone, just by way of introduction, Mike O'Brien with Oak Tree Development, Craig Malott with Traffic Planning and Design, and Mark Stanley and Claudia Schenk with McNeese, Wallace, and Nurk. Purpose of our presentation this evening, as you see on the agenda, is for the final land development plan for Phase Six that we call the Enterprise Development, as well as seeking a recommendation for approval of that plan and its requested modifications. A quick background on this specific piece of the project. As we stated, this was reviewed as part of the master plan, which was submitted in August of 2019. That master plan was accepted by the supervisors in September of 2019. And in September of this year, 2020, we submitted the, the plan that you see before you. So this Enterprise Zone sits on approximately thirty acres of the overall sixty-nine acre tract on the east side of State Road and north side of Harrisburg Pike. The entire Enterprise Zone area is located north of Swarun. And while the parcel itself has frontage on Harrisburg Pike and State Road, this part of the project is only accessible via Yellow Goose Road, which is to the north. And the township, highlight on the screen, has, as part of their right of way for Yellow Goose Road, has a small piece of right of way that extends down to this property line, where we'll be connecting our access driveway. So access for this site will not cross Swarun, and it's not connected to the commercial area that is planned for future phases on the south side of Swarun. This is a single flex warehouse space, as I mentioned earlier. It's a permitted use, two hundred and fifty-two thousand square foot facility. Again, this is speculative, they don't have a user identified. With the primary access being onto Yellow Goose Road, it will have approximately fifty-three loading dock doors on the southern side of the building, which is in this tan hatch, with the truckport being on the south side of the building. Passenger vehicles and parking for those will be on the north side of the facility, and we have two hundred spaces accounted for those. As you can see, we have a fairly robust buffer planting around the northern and eastern part of the property, which is required by ordinance. And the southern part of, of this development area is Swarun and on the same property. We're also proposing, as you can see, at this scale, it's a small patched area, but we're proposing connection to the pedestrian pathway throughout the development to go around as well. So that would be that eight-foot wide asphalt path that was discussed as part of the master plan and as part of the overall pedestrian plan for the, for the entire project. This facility will require a fire pump and water tank, which we have located on the west side of the facility. To date, we have addressed one round of comments from the township's engineer and staff and have resubmitted and received their latest letter dated December the second, which has some technical, minor technical comments and administrative comments. And, and in our review of those, we don't have any, any issue with any of those comments. So I'll take a pause there if there's any questions on the plan at this time before we get into any of the modifications.
I have one thing, just a curiosity. You're proposing twice the amount of vehicle parking, like an extra hundred parking spaces? I'm wondering what, what's that? What do you know that we don't know?
Honestly, we don't know anything about the user because the user hasn't been identified. So part of the parking space count, the building size, the number of dock spaces, is driven by market demand and by, you know, a marketability out on the, the street that the developer has identified. So there, it's very possible a user moves in and, and doesn't need as much trailer space, doesn't need as many passenger vehicles. But we have the space and we wanted to design and account for them.
Could, could we phase the parking so that the township approves the entire couple hundred parking spaces? But, you know, half of them are going to be installed as opposed to at the initial development when and if needed? I'm just thinking stormwater, there's a lot of asphalt.
That's certainly something after a user's been identified, that could be discussed with the township at that time.
Okay, I just hate to see you build all that parking and it never get used. And I, I think we could enter into some kind of an agreement that would save some of the asphalt unless we really need it.
Absolutely.
Be cheaper for you guys.
Well, Dennis, to ease some of your concerns, they, they're over parking? Scott, as far as calculations, this is not above the, the threshold that we established in the new parking ordinance?
No, I don't believe so. And we've had this discussion a lot recently. We're trying to allow the developers to right-size the parking to what they think the needs are for the project. I mean, what often happened in the past was the numbers drove the parking higher than what it really needed to be. So I think what Andy's saying is that if this, if this changes, they're not going to spend the money to build the extra parking if they don't.
Yeah, we, we put, we put protections just for what you talked about, Dennis, in the zoning ordinance to prevent businesses or essentially deter them from putting in absolutely more parking than, than what is required or necessary. Just for the, the issues that you brought up, stormwater management, and trying to reduce some of the heat island effect that occurs in, you know, densely populated areas. So additionally, Andy, am I correct, there is onsite stormwater for this project?
That is correct.
In addition to the floodplain restoration that is occurring?
Correct. So the floodplain restoration work that was proposed, John, if you wouldn't mind flipping back to that overall color render. Great, thank you. So the floodplain restoration in Swarun, that's on the west side of State Road and on the north side of the Penn State Health Lancaster Medical Center, this area handles all the runoff for the, the Penn State Hospital. The eastern stretch, which is in this area of Swarun, will be able to handle the runoff for the eastern development of Brookside, the, the commercial, the sheets, the other users that are proposed on the east side here. This light green area in the center of the plan is already a restored area that was completed years ago. So that's not being modified or changed in any way. The Enterprise Zone on the north side of Swarun, we have two, we have two stormwater BMPs, one on the west and one on the south side of the building. Those are designed to handle everything and the runoff that's associated with this area here, simply because we didn't have enough floodplain area to account for it. So those will have some infiltration bases and BMPs on site. So at the end of the day, if a user has identified that, that impervious can be reduced, and any calculations can be done to reduce, you know, the amount of stormwater or the costs associated with it, we'll certainly pursue that with the township. we'll certainly pursue that with the township.
Now, I just think some carefully worded statement on the plan agreement with the township. If it takes a second phase to build according to your plan, it will approve today, the extra hundred parking spaces, but you don't have to build them now, would save you the cost of three, thirty thousand, thirty thousand square foot of asphalt?
Dennis, I'm gonna... If the parking is shown on there, whether it be a future phase parking or not, we would require that the stormwater facilities be designed to account for that now.
Yeah, right. You do that now.
So I understand your concerns. I just wanted to let you know, we would still require them to account for that additional impervious area for their stormwater facilities that are being constructed now.
Right. It's just I'd rather see grass than asphalt. I'd rather have you build the parking without having to come back into us again for the extra hundred parking spaces, if you need it. I think we both end up winning if you don't need it. Thirty thousand square foot of asphalt you don't have to install. Just think about it. Have the owner think about it. And I'll argue with the supervisors.
Andy?
Yes.
Not to go in direct opposition to what Mr. Gary was suggesting, but this warehouse is about within a couple thousand square feet of the same one on 791?
That's what I've heard, yes.
Okay. I think recently it sticks my mind. It's like two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand there, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand here. But with that warehouse, in addition to your forty-five truck docks, you had forty-five parking spaces. What's going to happen here with the extra trailers? Where are they going to park?
Typically, in a facility this size, what we found with end-users is that the amount of extra trailer spaces is pure bonus to them. If they have a long facility with many dock doors, typically, they don't, depending on their business, the turn on dock doors and the necessary to have, the need to have all those other trailer spaces, depending on the user, sometimes it's just not there. So in those facilities, they, we have the space to account for it, and it's a marketing effort to be able to get a user. They may need the trailer parking, they may not. They may need it for passenger cars, and we restripe it and rerun the traffic study. There's multiple options with speculative development. With this facility, we don't have room to have all those other trailer spaces, so we've tried to extend the building to have as much wall with dock doors as we possibly can.
Again, comparing the two, though, they're both two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot buildings. How many dock doors do you have here? Fifty-five or something like that? And you have forty-five on the other one. So are these two properties looking for different clients, different types of uses? Because, I mean, maybe to take Dennis's point, maybe we shouldn't allow forty-four extra truck parking spaces on 791 Sunny Battery. That's a lot of extra truck parking if you don't need it.
Correct. And if that applicant gets an end-user that doesn't need that, and they don't need to build it, and we may file our revised plan to remove that, there's the option to not have that. Simply on those sites, the space was there. The grades worked. This site has very steep terrain from the northeast corner where the driveway is, down across the site. I believe there's forty to fifty-some feet of grade change. So we have a retaining wall along that southern dock area. And without going down, there's also the floodplain line. So to stay out of the floodplain on this site, we just don't simply have space for that additional row of docks or of trailer spaces.
So your two clients will be looking for different... Last seats.
Or they may be competing for the same one. I honestly don't know.
But the sites sort of determining that.
The sites are determining that. And, you know, the site locations are different. This one's immediately off an interstate. The other one is not as direct to an interstate. So there is, there's a host of different things in the marketing of the sites that go into what type of user it appeals to.
So without extra trailer parking, then there won't be an issue of people dropping trailers somewhere along access roads or anything like that to queue up?
We're not anticipating that, but again, it's speculative development.
Two equal buildings have two different requirements, yet you don't have the clients for either one of them.
Correct. And that's the tough nature of it, without having an end-user to know that sweet spot of every item and every need that they have, that you can design to and speak to. The reality, though, is the way that the market is, when someone wants a facility, they want to build it. They don't want to wait six months to go through all the approvals and entitlements. They want to see you have an entitlement in hand. It may not be exactly what they want, but we can work through that. But they can at least get a shovel in the ground and start moving earth. And that's what a lot of the speculative development affords those users. They've already cut six months off that window.
Okay, once again, there are a handful of modifications. Some of them appear to be virtually duplicates of the other one we looked at, but could you briefly?
Sure. Excuse me. First modification, and I'll follow along if you have the DMA letter dated December second. I'll follow along in the order of those. The first is Section 265-54A1. Again, that's in relation to plan scale, where we have scales for this plan larger than one inch equals fifty feet. We have some overall plans at one inch equals one-hundred-and-fifty feet for overall sheets. So that's the justification for that waiver. The second is with regard to sidewalks, Section 265-84A1B, whereby we're requesting a modification to not install sidewalks on both sides of the, or immediately adjacent to the access driveways and the roadways. Again, if you recall, this parcel extends across Swar Run to Harrisburg Pike and State Road. In lieu of that, we have the pedestrian pathway that goes through the entire campus. The next waiver is 265-87I2B, which is with regard to the planting perpendicular islands opposite each other in adjacent parking rows. Again, we have this to break up some of the parking rows and just shift some of the planting islands around. The fourth section, 222-66B, is to not provide sidewalks immediately adjacent to the curb line and to not install curbing along portions of the Harrisburg Road frontage. Recall, again, the property goes the whole way to Harrisburg Pike and State Road. In lieu of that, we have the pedestrian pathways throughout the entire development for connectivity, and it's safer for pedestrians. The next, with regard to streets and sidewalk ordinance, 222-66C. Again, that references installation of curbing, sidewalk, and pavement widening along the existing PennDOT Street, PennDOT Street being Harrisburg Pike. And in lieu of that, we have the pedestrian pathways and the sidewalk network. Next is with regard to loading ratios and stormwater ordinance, Section 216-14A2C. This is allowing loading ratios within those basins on the enterprise zone site, exceeding the, both the total loading ratio and the impervious loading ratios per the, exceeding what is in the township's stormwater ordinance. But they are still in line with what has been recommended by our soil scientist for the area, given the karst geology. Number seven, this is with regard to de-watering time, stormwater ordinance, Section 260-260-14D, where the basin volume storage cannot exceed seventy-two hours. We have one of our basins more of an extended detention, allowing it to infiltrate slower and provide the volume control for the development as well. That's one of our surface basins. And the last waiver is stormwater section 260-170A. That P control calculations can, we can use the SES method for calculations versus rational, and that's just a differentiation in how the calculations can be run. Our methodology is consistent with DEP permitting as well. Happy to answer any questions on those.
And once again, I would ask the other comments on the plan, you have any problems complying with the?
No. No, any questions, we'll work with staff or Scott and his team on.
Okay, does anybody on the commission or in the audience or on Zoom have any further input? Okay, if not, we're ready for some motions. First, the modifications.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of modification request one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight for the Brookside Enterprise Phase Six Land Development Plan, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Detter, seconded by Mr. Rohr, that we recommend approval of modifications one through eight, subject to staff and engineers' comments. Put it back, please.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye. Motion carries seven to zero. And we need a motion for the final plan for Brookside.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Brookside Enterprise Phase Six Final Land Development Plan, conditioned on resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Detter, seconded by Mr. Palakowski, that we recommend approval of the final plan for the Brookside Enterprise Phase Six, subject to staff and engineers' comments.
Mrs. Will?
Aye.
Mr. Caldas?
Aye.
Mr. Detter?
Aye.
Mr. Palakowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Byrne?
Aye.
Mr. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Fullerton?
Aye. That recommendation, that motion for recommendation of final plan passed seven to zero.
Thank you. We appreciate your continued partnership in our project. Thank you.
Taking the rest of the night off? Okay. All right, the next plan is revised preliminary plan and modifications for Phil Frye, Linda Barto, Michael Frye, and Nicholas Frye on State Road Commerce Parks.
And good evening. I'm Dennis Reichel with HRG, and with me tonight is Dave Gagnia from HighView, and Tyler Prime is on the Zoom call. Craig Malott was also involved with the traffic design with Craig Malott. And what you can see before you tonight is a revised preliminary and final plan for Lot One and Three at State Road. The revised preliminary plan, which is before you currently, basically focuses on a revised lot configuration for Lot Number One and Three. Lot Number One was reconfigured to be about three-point-seven acres, and Lot Number, or excuse me, Lot One was revised to be three-point-seven, and Lot Number Three was revised to be nine-point-two acres. The uses proposed for each of these lots include a five-thousand-square-foot convenience store on Lot Number Three with eight gasoline dispensers and three high-speed diesel bays. It includes forty passenger vehicle parking spaces and and includes two truck parking spaces and one loading space. On Lot Number One, which is to the left on the screen, that would be a forty-six-hundred-square-foot car wash facility, which is mainly for passenger vehicles. And that includes twenty-three parking spaces and also the opportunity for vacuum cleaning. The uses are permitted by right within the enterprise zone. Traffic study was previously submitted as part of the warehouse development project, and that was looked at in detail previously. We did submit an updated traffic impact study as part of this project. One of the key aspects of this is the driveway and access, which we have looked at pretty much in detail at this point. There are three access points within two, with three access points to the property. The first one being on the bottom of the sheet. You can see there is a right-in and left-in and also a right-out. As you move up to the intersection of State Road and Yellow Goose, you can see Yellow Goose extending into the property. And at that intersection, we have a right-in and right-out, which would be for passenger vehicles. If you continue up to the top of the sheet, which is not shown on this sheet, but there is also a full access that occurs on Lot Number Two, which allows access at the rear of the site and over an access drive towards the convenience store. And there is an access easement in place for that drive currently. The site is served by public sewer and water. We do have capacities from each of those, and we do have a water approval. LASSA is in the process of reviewing the sewer design, and we anticipate approvals from shortly. The overall stormwater management was designed and approved with the original warehouse project, and that was updated and modified to be consistent for this project. We provide landscaping and lighting as required by the ordinance. There is one modification related to landscape. And I believe those are really the key aspects of the project. There were three modifications that we have, but I will pause right there and see if there are any questions.
The driveway entrance onto State Road, the northern one, is that entrance going to be available for southbound State Road to turn into the site there as opposed to the traffic-controlled intersection?
Yes, that is a left-in and a right-in.
Okay, so if I'm a truck getting off of 283, heading on State Road, I have the option of cutting through the property in front to get up to the big warehouse use, or wait in line at the traffic light and turn at the traffic light? It just seems to me as if the individual getting off the highway, going to the convenience store, as well as the trucker, either convenience store or the warehouse use in the back, is going to use this lot as a cut-through. And as you go through the lot in the back of the convenience store, there's this extremely wide width of asphalt, which needs somehow to separate the left, the eastbound, westbound traffic in the lot. It just, it seems like you're creating a mess of traffic flow behind the convenience store as well as a new turn-off for large vehicles.
Yeah, let me take a minute to answer that. So behind the store is where we do have the true two truck parking spaces, and those will be striped. And then also, you can see on this kind of faintly, John may be able to zoom in, but there is a adjacent area to the truck parking space that is going to be striped, so that will clearly identify where the parking spaces are and where the travel lane is. Now regarding trucks desiring to bypass, you know, through, through the lot. My opinion would be that that would be cumbersome for their, for them to do that. I do not believe that they would want to cut through a convenience store and a diesel pump in order to access the warehouse. Because once you cross over the, the access drive, then you have to make a right and then another left in order to continue back to the warehouse.
Yeah, I'd really preference seeing a physical barrier on State Road that uses the southbound lane of State Road as a queuing for the traffic light and not be interfered with cars turning into the 7-Eleven or whatever it is with a convenience store. Almost seems like, you know, you're creating cross traffic where you don't need to.
That was something that was looked at during the, the traffic impact assessment. And we do have adequate stacking distance if vehicles do wish, do desire to turn left at the State Road entrance.
Right, because the plan right now shows really no stacking painted lines on the highway and we're going to look at the turning movements there.
I would tend to agree with Dennis as well, that, that, that concerns me. You have a fairly steep roadway going downhill there. I would rather direct those people down to the traffic light and have a proper stacking lane at the traffic light to come into the property. I'd rather have it a right in, right out there. I think it'll be a whole lot safer.
And even the convenience store user is not only going to see that as the entrance to the convenience store, but when he goes to leave to go back up to 283 or East Petersburg, he's not going to go around to the traffic light. He's going to use the driveway, so.
During the, during the review process, we did have some similar concerns between staff and our office. We did put that back on to our transportation engineer, to McMahon and, and TPD to go back and forth on this. McMahon was satisfied in the end that the design met the requirements and that, that it was adequate to function the way that they had intended it to do. We, like I said, staff and our office did have similar concerns and, and we went back and forth extensively. And the township's traffic engineer did review the information and said that it does meet the design standards and did not have a concern with how it would function. And again, this all ties in with the ultimate design and the finished design for the 283 overpass. But there's going to be more, there's going to be more lanes there as part of that. You can't think of it sort of as it is now. It'll be in that, that future, future setup. This can't, this can't open until the roadway over 283 is completed. That was a board decision early on.
So let me ask this then, so those people turning left that are going southbound, they're going to cross two lanes?
They will. They'll be in a turn lane and they'll be crossing two lanes because there'll be two lanes going to the ramp.
That just doesn't seem safe.
It's just, it's unnecessary crossing when you're that close to the intersection.
Right.
Doesn't, and, and it's going to be enhanced by whatever backup the traffic light that Yellow Goose creates.
Not a traffic engineer, but that just does not look safe.
Scott, did you, did you happen to mention that this was on the original preliminary plan that was, that was approved?
It was on, I didn't mention that, but it was on the original preliminary plan. And like I said, staff and our office still questioned it. And we went back through the traffic engineers and they, again, the township engineers appointed, the township's appointed traffic engineer agreed that it was, it was consistent with that approved preliminary plan and that the new data supplied, supported it, so.
That additionally, there's, TPD provided evidence and McMahon Associates and the township traffic engineer reviewed it and agreed that there is sufficient stacking for trucks turning left onto Yellow Goose off of State Road. I, I want to assure the planning commission that staff has exhausted all options to review this, this, this right in, right out off of State Road. And everything comes back that it's meeting the requirements and warrants.
I think the, the original preliminary plan, was that when they were putting a hotel there though?
It was, yeah. Hotel was one of, was one of these.
Use, a whole different traffic.
Actually, it's based off the traffic study, it's actually a reduction in traffic.
Yes, correct.
Yes, because the original preliminary plan was a hotel and a, Dennis, if I remember correctly, a fast food restaurant?
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
So a convenience store and a car wash, even though it's a truck stop, would generate less traffic than the original traffic study had proposed.
But it wouldn't, it definitely would increase the truck traffic at this point.
Not necessarily.
Okay, back, I think the last time this was in for review, there was a discussion about traffic and, I believe somebody said there would be about 400 feet of stacking to turn left on Yellow Goose. You're going south on State.
I don't, I don't remember those numbers exactly, but there is, there is a lengthy turn lane that would get you into, into Yellow Goose and into this, into this driveway now.
But my point is, if somebody's in that turning lane to turn at this intersection here instead of at the light, how much remains from there to state to stack?
Yeah, I don't.
What's the distance between this driveway?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, I understand the question. I just don't know the, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, you give me a minute, I'm bringing up the.
Again, and.
I don't believe, is Craig still on Zoom?
I think at times you're finding issues that may meet design standards, but just don't make sense.
Right.
And you know, and then, you know, and then different boards use the negotiating skills to take out things that might have met standards, but create issues that you're not particularly supporting.
I just want to make sure it's safe because it does not look safe to me, but I know I'm not a traffic commissioner.
And, and my expertise in traffic is limited to having a driver's license.
If I, if I can scale off of one of the, one of the prints, it's probably about 350 feet between the intersections. But John, I, I just question why the state would, the state would allow this to be people turning across two traffic lanes.
This is a township road.
Oh, it is, okay. But this whole thing wasn't?
The state right away ends to the north of this, sort of where the, the limits of the, the bridge across Amtrak are.
Oh, really? Because my comparison was going to be, you've got going west on Harrisburg Pike at Good Drive. They won't even, they won't, they don't even put a guarded yellow turn, left turn lane there.
If you're.
Because you're crossing two lanes of traffic.
Yeah.
And here we're allowing it to happen at an unsignalized place. And it's tractor trailers turning now too. It's not just cars zipping across.
Could be.
There's Finnerville Road, just south of Marietta at the CVS. There's a center turn lane and cars do cross two lanes of traffic to enter into the CVS. And then also CVS, their deliveries, their trucks also go enter into that.
So I'm reading from TPD's report from June 2nd, 2020. Based on the results of supplemental analysis provided in this report, level of service at the left and right in, right out driveway will operate within acceptable ranges. Site distances for the left in movement from State Road are ample over 1,000 feet of site distance.
They have site distance.
The downgrade of State Road for left turn entering movements in the subject driveway is advantageous for trucks wishing to utilize diesel pumps. The provision of a left turn entering movement at the subject driveway will minimize the number of cars and trucks that will need to traverse the signalized intersection at State Road and Yellow Goose Road, thereby improving capacity at State Road and Yellow Goose Road. The provision of, the provision of the left turn entering movement at the subject driveway will minimize the number of trucks on Yellow Goose Road, segments of State Road, minimize distance trucks must travel on township-owned roadways, thereby minimizing related impacts to the pavement section. In the, if the left in movement is not provided at the subject access, trucks would need to travel further on State Road and Yellow Goose Road, increasing truck travel and associated pavement capacity impacts on those additional road segments. A two-way left turn lane is proposed on State Road approaching the proposed left in, right in, right out driveway. And this lane provides ample queue storage for cars and trucks wishing to turn left into the subject driveway. With a two-way left turn pattern and adjacent painted median area, over 300 feet of queue storage is available in advance of the driveway, which is substantially more storage than needed based on the queue analysis. Based on the evaluation above, TPD believes left in, right in, right out driveway will operate acceptably from a level of service and queue perspective. And provision of the left in movement will minimize truck trip lengths on township-owned roads. Therefore, TPD continues to recommend the subject driveway be designed and constructed with a left in, right in, right out configuration. And I did see that Mr. Craig Malott from TPD is still on Zoom. I would ask that he weigh in since this is his letter and his area of expertise.
Hey John, can you hear me? Sorry, I actually didn't know. I had no idea this, this plan.
Yeah, we can hear you, Craig. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I didn't know that this plan was on the agenda, that it was needed. Two issues I want to address, I think first with respect to the cut through. What I asked the planning commission to consider is that most, it's related to trucks going to Yellow Goose. Most of those are coming from out of town, not local trucks following GPS. And I don't think you have a GPS program that's instructing the truck to turn through a private parking lot to get through to another private area to make a right and then a left. I think it's going to direct them to the traffic signal. And I actually think the trucks that are headed to the Yellow Goose would be more inclined to use the signal anyway because it's going to have an advanced left turn arrow, which is going to make it easier for them to turn left into Yellow Goose Road because they're going to have that protected arrow, which they wouldn't have at the right in, right out, left in driveway. And then as far as the need for the left in, the other thing I would ask the planning commission to consider, and this is something that we had talked about with McMahon and Chris Bauer, who's your traffic engineer. If you don't provide the left in off of State Road, if someone could zoom out on the plan, what we think is going to happen is because you have to drive to the signal, turn left on the Yellow Goose Road and then drive a significant distance to get in to the site. So if you can zoom out, you see this, you've got to drive several hundred feet, make another left at the top of the page, make a left to get back in. What Chris and I talked about is it, what, what it'll probably create is most people trying to illegally turn left on Yellow Goose Road into the right in, right out driveway, where you've got cars stacked, where you've got the potential for cars to back up into the traffic signal. So it's, in my mind anyway, so in essence, what you would do if you eliminate that left turn movement is you would concentrate your problem at that right in, right out, which is much closer to the signal. As opposed to where the left in is located now, there's no queues that you're dealing with in terms of turning across. You have ample site distance, you have ample storage for trucks and cars to turn in. So, and it's not uncommon to have a left turn across two lanes on a road like this. It really just comes down to having ample site distances, which this does. You can see down through the hill, up the new road that's being built, built with Penn State Health Medical Center right now and plenty of storage. There's a football field's worth of storage for cars or trucks to store in that two-way left turn lane on State Road before they turn left into the driveway. So it was those reasons that we thought it made sense to leave that driveway left in, right in, right out. And we think it makes, all things considered, when you consider the other access points and where you may push left entering traffic, we think this makes the most sense.
Greg, thank you.
Okay, so where were we? You, you were taking a break in your presentation.
I think it was mainly to entertain any questions or comments.
So this is, this is not the sheets though, right?
No, no.
Sheets is further south.
Correct.
Okay. And I just was wondering, what is this? Some places it's referred to a truck stop, another place a convenience store. What, what are we approving?
It is, it would be a truck stop from what, what we heard from the developer. And I believe Dennis, if you can confirm that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, we, with the preliminary plan, we have one modification requesting, is it correct?
Yes, that's correct. Actually, there were three modifications. And so I believe one of them was mentioned on the preliminary plan and two were included on the final. But ultimately, we would like those two all be acted on with the preliminary plan.
Yeah, for, to avoid any misunderstanding and to clear, clarify, Scott had originally prepared the letter with the last two modifications, and I believe it was a December 8th letter. And that review letter was for the, the final plan.
Right.
However, it makes more sense to include them in the preliminary plan because those waivers will then, or those modifications will carry over to the final plan anyway.
Okay, so we, we have three modifications to discuss and then a preliminary plan approval and a final proof.
Correct.
All right, okay. All right, so let's, let's, you could briefly tell us what the modifications are about?
Yep, certainly. So the first modification is regarding a landscape buffer. And within the enterprise zone, a type E buffer is required, which is typical screening between adjacent commercial uses. And what we are proposing on this project is ultimately, we don't have the, John may be able to pull up the grading plan, but if we were to look at the grading plan, the, the access drive sits about 10 to 13 feet higher than the convenience store and also the car wash. So that is in effect acting as a buffer. And ultimately, there's side slopes and retaining walls on the adjacent side of the access drive. So there's very limited space for any sort of buffer. But ultimately, the, the access drive would be providing screening. The other area that requires a buffer is between the, the diesel tanks and also the car wash. And within there, we are providing shrubs in lieu of the screening and buffering that's required by the ordinance. And I mean, typically, these are very similar and related uses. And so what we're proposing, we believe, is reasonable and acceptable. The second modification request was regarding a minimum vertical curve length. And there is one vertical curve that we're looking at, which occurs between the access drive going over the culvert from lot number two and then also connecting to the access drive behind the convenience store. And you kind of zoom in on that area, you can kind of see that that is a very short access drive length between the end of the culvert and where it intersects with the access drive behind the convenience store. And so we were not able to meet the required vertical curve length, which is 144 feet. In lieu of that, we're proposing a 75-foot vertical curve. And really, the slopes in there are relatively minimal. I think they're all under 5%. So we believe that is a reasonable alternative. The, the third modification is related to the vertical curves that regards the, the K-value, which is a function of determining the vertical curve length. And in lieu of a K-value of 26, we're proposing a K-value of 13. K value of 26, we're proposing a K value of 13, so ultimately that just means the vertical curve is a little bit shorter than what's required which is consistent or similar to the the previous modification request. But I think overall, you know, that's a relatively short distance, all the slopes are going to be under 5% and that's a reasonable approach. The engineer has reviewed this and they do recommend approval of each of the modifications.
Is there any further discussion on any modifications to other plans?
Just a question on the drive that's on the screen now, the entrance into yellow goose. If trucks were to leave the site and do the right-hand turn to the traffic light, is that inside radius enough for a truck turning movement?
No, it is not and trucks are specifically prohibited from making rights there. That was something we looked at originally and the township and staff did not recommend that, so that was completely eliminated from the plan.
If I'm on if I'm on state road coming off of 283 and I go into this truck stop to use one of the services, the only way I can get back to 283 is to go to the neighboring lot, I guess, and I don't know if I have any easement to do that, but to use a driveway that heads east, go through their lot so that I can get onto yellow goose road to get to the traffic light.
You really have two options, you can either go out through the access drive which you just described and there is an access easement in place for that, or also you could come up to the state road driveway and make a right out towards 283.
Okay, but if I was going to do a left now, coming out of this site.
Then you have to, then you have to go.
On state road and I can't get to yellow goose road on this property. I was wondering if you're not looking at all the different turning movements that a truck stop would have, we ought to provide for them to be able to go north and south on state road and it seems like they're blocked unless you can get an easement and properly sign it to cut through the neighbor's parking lot.
There already is an easement.
Is there is there an easement for this lot on?
Yes, there is.
Okay, doesn't show up on the plan, so it shows up as an easement on this lot for the neighbor to the east, but not for this lot to go through the property to the east. I don't say, no, just don't say it, but if they have it, fine, they have it and sign it.
Yeah, I mean, there there was an easement on lot number two that was recorded with the final plan for the warehouse and there will be an access easement over this property that continues to the property line.
And because of the the length and complication with it, it really needs to be signed well because I don't know if a truck driver, he's going to look on yellow goose and, you know, either try to make the turn, go off the edge of the road or make an illegal turn on state road and it's problematic, I think. But I only have a driver's license on it.
I mean, I can say that I I really struggle, I don't think I can support it with that the way the upper driveway is designed, I mean, I I've driven truck coming down that hill, I think it's very foolish for us to encourage truckers to cross two lanes with a truck to access this property, making a left turn. I think that's very safe, if it wasn't for coming down the steep hill off the bridge, I think it would be altogether different story and maybe that's not taken into account in the traffic studies, I don't know, in the engineering, but I can just say from having driven truck, that is not going to be safe. I think you need to redesign the other entrance so the trucks can come in and out of there, I think we probably are going to have to let trucks go out there that want to turn south than on state road because I think Dennis is right, you're you're limited of what you can do, but I am not comfortable with this plan from a safety standpoint for traffic.
I'm not sure if you were proposing or thinking that maybe trucks could make a a left out onto state road on the, I think that would be very, I don't think that would be something that would be approved because that may potentially tr- trigger another signal and then you also have, you know, two full, you know, you've got a full right turn in and a dual right and a dual left out at an inter- at an intersection that's very close to an adjacent signal, so.
That wouldn't work.
I think one item you brought up was regarding slopes, I don't, I don't have the plan in front of me, but I don't believe the slopes from our site to 283 are all that steep. I don't know what that grade is off the top of my head.
I drive it, if you're going down there in a truck, that's steep now, to get down to the light, it's not near as steep, but up where your driveway is, approaching that has some slope to it, especially the bridges are higher now as well.
Right.
But that's my opinion, the rest of the commission will have to decide as well, but I can't support it the way it is. I can support the modifications.
Yeah. So the truck traffic heading south on state coming out of here has to go across the culvert, come up around.
Correct.
So that would take some signage then to show they can't go around the convenience store, right at the corner that we're looking at on the screen there.
Right, correct.
Is there, would be any interest in limiting left turn truck traffic across those two lanes at the, at the, what is that?
At the upper driveway.
At the upper driveway, just say no trucks left turn.
And just have cars go in, yeah, I'm not as worried about cars, but this is a truck stop, this isn't, I mean, they'll have some cars, but it's they're targeting truck business. So why even allow them to create that issue, I I just struggle, I, we're going to have a problem here.
Well, yeah, it's going to be kind of W know versus W don't know or six of one half dozen or another, if if we make everything, everybody go in, everything go in there, then you won't be able to turn.
Maybe we need to enhance that entrance.
Then you won't be able to turn into the convenience store because trucks will be stacked coming out yellow goose. I don't know, maybe it's better to provide.
There's another way to make it safe, I don't know.
More options you have, the better.
The engineer says it's adequate, but adequate isn't good enough for me for this site, that's where I'm at.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, ready for motions, we'll take the take the three modifications together first.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of modifications one, two, and three for the state road commerce park revised preliminary subdivision and land development plan for lots one and three, subject to staff and engineer comments.
I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Fullerton, that we recommend approval of modifications one, two, and three for the state road commerce park, subject to staff and engineers comments.
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi.
The motion carries seven to zero. So now a motion for the revised preliminary plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend approval, the state road commerce park revised preliminary subdivision and land development plan for lots one and three, conditioned on resolution of all outstanding staff and engineering comments.
We have a motion by Mr. Datter, seconded by Mr. Fullerton, that we recommend approval of the revised preliminary plan for state road commerce park, subject to comments, subject staff and engineers comments.
Mrs. Will? Could you repeat that just to?
Hi.
Thank you. Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Nay.
Mr. Fullerton?
Nay.
So we have five to two.
Motion passes five to two with Mr. Rohr and Mr. Fullerton voting negative. Okay, get this thing started, I'll I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the revised, of the, yeah.
Final plan.
It is the final plan, not a revised one, right John? It's final plan.
Yes, it is.
Not revised final plan.
It says revised on the review letter.
Yeah, it says revised.
It is, it is revised final plan.
Revised final.
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion that we recommend approval of the revised final plan for state road commerce park, subject to staff and engineers comments.
I'll second.
Was it, Mr. Datter?
Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Mr. Rohr?
Nay.
Mr. Fullerton?
Nay.
The motion passes five to two with Mr. Rohr and Mr. Fullerton voting nay.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you to the board.
Okay, so much for the reviews for this evening, we now have some new business, it's come to our attention that two of our regular commission members have tendered their resignations. Jim Hackett resigned effective immediately and Brian Biggs as well, so we need to make a recommendation to the supervisors for filling those spots and the subject is open for discussion.
I think we should fill it with the first two alternates. I actually like all our alternates, I think they're very good, I hope, you know, eventually we'll get Dennis in this too.
I'm a young man, I have years ahead of me.
I would, that's what I would support.
Who's next in line?
It doesn't matter.
Is Julie on?
There's, there's no, there's no seniority when it comes to this, it's whoever you wish to recommend.
But, but as.
They came on for.
Dwight said they came on.
Friends on.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, but who's next, is it Dan or is it Julie?
Dan and Julie are the first two.
They came on together, and he came a little bit later, not much later.
I'll make a motion if we.
Excuse me, in fairness to Julie and Matt, I don't believe that we can hear the discussion that's going on, sorry.
Okay, we're discussing filling the bacon positions and I just, I am making a motion that we recommend filling Mr. Hackett's position with Mrs. Will, right? And the second motion is to recommend that Mr. Caldis be appointed to fulfill Brian Biggs' bacon position.
And Mrs. Byrne, if I may, just for the purposes of our our minutes and for the public that may watch this, I would recommend that the question be asked to Mrs. Will and Mr. Caldis if they would accept a recommendation to the board.
Yes.
I would accept.
Mrs. Will?
Yes, I would accept.
Okay, thank you.
So now I have to find somebody, you have to. So I will second the two motions, I guess that would be.
Let's take them as a combined. Can we, can we take that as a combined motion?
We can do it, you don't need to do it again separately.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll redo it, I'm, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend appointment of Mrs. Will to to take the position of Mr. Hackett.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion that we recommend Mrs. Will be nominated to fill the term of, what did you say?
Fill the position of Mr. Hackett.
Mr. Hackett, okay. And seconded, that was by Mrs. Byrne and seconded by Mr. Rohr.
Mr. Datter.
Datter, I think.
I believe Mr. Datter seconded.
Yeah, we're just throwing curveballs to you.
So you're out of it, so you're out of this?
Ah.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Mrs. Byrne made the motion, I seconded it. Seconded it.
Sorry, 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 right, too many names, Mr. There is Mrs. Will.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Chairman, should I include Mr. Garringer in a vote? Because this involves the whole planning commission. He is not a voting member, but.
Not a voting member tonight.
I don't, I don't think I have any right to vote.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that, make that clear. Mrs. Will?
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi.
Okay, that motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Chair, and I'll make a re- make a motion to recommend appointment of Mr. Caldis to take the position of Mr. Biggs.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Byrne, seconded by Mr. Datter, that we recommend Mr. Caldis be appointed to fill the term of Mr. Biggs.
Hi.
Mr. Caldis?
Hi.
Mr. Datter?
Hi.
Mr. Palakowski?
Hi.
Mrs. Rohr?
Mrs. Rohr?
Mrs. Byrne, Mrs. Byrne.
There is a Mrs. Rohr.
It's been a long day.
There's a Mr. Byrne dude.
Mrs. Byrne?
Hi.
Mr. Rohr?
Hi.
Mr. Fullerton?
Hi.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Welcome.
Welcome Julie.
Thank you.
Did the supervisors agree?
Yeah. So just that, since this is occurring in timeline when January comes reappointments, that recommendation will go up to the board and if they take the planning commission's recommendation, that will occur on January 4th. Am I right? I think it's 4th.
It is the 4th.
First Monday of the year.
Okay, under old business, we had the planning commission bylaws, I'm not sure how everybody else feels, but I would prefer not to get into it at this hour, so John, if you would just continue that through a future meeting, unless anybody else has a burning desire. That would bring us to project report, John. That would bring us to project report, John.
We're coming to what is typically a slowdown period for the township and it's culminated by the fact that we had four projects before uniting two sketch plans. So, um, it's good to see that the Brookside project is, is moving forward with their projects. That's akin to a Domino's, a Domino effect. They have everything lined up. So once the Sheets Plan came in, then they worked, started working on phase six. We have not heard anything yet, but the anticipation is that they will move on to their next phase. I don't know if it will be medical office buildings or the independent living units. They have not, we haven't had that discussed yet. As far as other projects, heating control is well underway with construction. Nissan Foods, the property that's on Embassy Drive, that is almost completed. They're near, they're nearing completion and we anticipate having a CEO to them in the very near future. Lidl had their grand opening November 18th. We have, as far as Penn State Hospital, I was told today that they are looking to move forward with the medical office building portion and the parking garage, and a permit should be issued for those within the next few days to next week. 791 approved, 701, um, nothing new to report there other than the approvals. 4791, 601, nothing new to report there. All told, things are starting, there's, there's a couple of projects, Penn State and Brookside, and with the state road commerce park now going through the planning commission, those were the two most active projects from a township review perspective. As far as construction, heating control is the newest one that started construction. We did receive a time extension request for, um, phase five of Lime Springs Square, which would be the property that's to the west of the Penn State Medical Office Building there. Probably the biggest thing that occurred down there is Penn State approached township about setting up temporary tent for COVID screening. So that, that, that started on Monday. So we are monitoring that closely because of traffic impacts to Noel Drive. But other than that, I anticipate, rather than having, I, um, take these sketch plans that we just received and you all just acted on, I, I have a feeling we are going to see a, a little bit of a slowdown right now for the beginning of the year. The last three years, we have been busy and we have been receiving plans nonstop. But I, if this is any indication, I, I, I think we're in for a little bit of a slowdown. I hope it's not too much. But with the uptick in COVID cases, I think that's one of the reasons why we're not seeing a lot of movement, but, um, it hasn't affected all the industries. Healthcare in particular, they are, they can't keep up and they are consistently ahead of everybody else when it comes to development right now. And the other one, there's always a need for speculative industrial buildings. It's that, that type of industry that they don't typically have a tenant come in to do land development. They don't want to waste their time. That's why you see so many speculative buildings being built, hence the one on Yellow Goose Road for Brookside Phase Six, 601 Stony Battery, or 601 Stony Battery Road, 701 and 791, all speculative buildings. Pardon me?
Dairy Road was spec also.
No, it was not.
Oh, it wasn't?
No, that was Fillmore Container.
Okay.
That was a very hush, hush thing because they didn't want to go public until the plan was approved. But thank you, Mr. Rohr, they did, they have started construction. Additionally, the board, um, will be acting next week on a conditional use application for a billboard at that site as well. But for the most part, um, not a, nothing major to report at this time.
How about the two residential plans that have been at least in the air for a while?
The Stalford Property Subdivision, again, they are, they, they gave, um, they got a time extension for, um, to record because they still haven't completed everything they need to do. And what was the other?
The other one was, I forget the name of, but it's up like above Norton, this way, up, up on the hill.
That's still in the preliminary plan phase. There are quite a few things going on with that, that, um, is requiring discussion with the developer and staff.
I mean, that's been going on for.
It pushed in two years.
Yeah. So nothing.
No, TOA Phase Two is very close to getting everything done to record. They're going before the board for their agreements and financial security next week. Matter of fact, Sheets is going before the board next week for their agreements and financial security. So, and, uh, we're also working, we have a meeting with the developer tomorrow to go over, um, and get clarification on the reopening and rededication of state road. I will have, um, more updates for everybody, um, probably after next week. They did have the intention of reopening it on December, by December 25th, but like I said, I'll have, I'll have better updates after my meeting tomorrow or Cindy and my meeting tomorrow and, um, after next week's supervisor meeting.
Further out, when's Centerville scheduled?
It was pushed back, the let date was pushed back to September of 2021. It was originally supposed to be let this year, but because of a number of things, it was pushed back to September of 2021. And at first it was Penn Dot cited right away clearance, but now there's potential that it could be pushed back again. We don't know, but we're, we're preparing for it to get pushed back again. But as of right now, from Penn Dot, they are planning on having a let date September 21 and then, um, construction beginning in the spring season of '22. And that would cover two and a half construction seasons, so '22, '23, and into '24, as of right And, uh, the state road, 283 and state road interchange is still on a schedule. They were anticipating being done by next summer. And as far as right now, they are still on schedule, maybe a slight delay here and there because of Antrac, but they're still pushing for it and, um, we're looking for that project to be done by next summer. Holland Street Bridge is down. The Holland Street Bridge is, has been removed. So after, I believe, uh, I think Cindy told me it's 15 years. For the benefit of tonight, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Cecil's filled in in my absence last summer. It just so happened, uh, the opportunity arose to have him sit on the planning commission. I thought it was a, it was a great opportunity considering the items on the agenda for him to get a good experience with the planning commission.
Colin, I was, um, you sent out an email about the township maps or whatever. Who's on that committee? Because I didn't notice from like copy or line copy or whatever.
You weren't here.
I know, I didn't, I wasn't.
John Bingham, Tom Bennett, Alex Warbaugh from the county, Michael Bryan.
Linda DiPerna?
Linda DiPerna on it.
Scott Russell.
Scott Russell's on it, Scott Lewisworth, I believe.
No. Tom, Tom Bennett and Scott Russell represent the board. Anna Brent represent the planning commission. And then we have three members at large residents, which is Linda, Mike O'Brien, and John Bingham. And then we have staff, which Colin is heading it up for staff. And then, uh, myself, Cindy. Nick Ebersol from DMA has been instrumental in this. He's doing a fantastic job. At this point, he's, he, him and Colin are leading it and, um, Scott, Cindy and I are kind of in the background helping them out with whatever they need. Nate Sturgis is our technical guru. He helps us, uh, with that stuff. And then we have representatives from County Planning Commission, Alex Warbaugh and Dean Severson.
And what's your targeted completion date? Will never be completed?
June of '21. June 21 to get it adopted by the board.
And they got copies of the maps.
We did.
You did.
Well, you sent something out.
We do.
After the last meeting.
If any of the planning commission members, um, their base maps at this point for stormwater management, um, transportation roads and parks, trails and open space, we have copies if any of the members of the planning commission would like some. We can also email them too.
Yeah, I mean, Colin did the last time, that's after the last meeting, I think. That's good.
Not much happened tonight.
As far as the steering, uh, official map, on January 5th will be the next steering committee meeting, and then we'll have a public meeting, our next public meeting, I believe it's, uh, January 9th. Can you remember, Colin? It's either January 9th or January 13th, and then, uh, our last steering committee meeting on the 19th, uh, and before it goes to the board. In fact, the first, uh, board meeting in February, we anticipate taking it to the board for acknowledgement and authorization to send it to the planning commissions. So.
13.
All right, so by March.
Public meeting. Uh, 19th is steering committee, 22nd of January is.
Yep.
Sending this stuff to the solicitor. February 3rd is the, where the supervisors accept and send it to us. Uh, March 10th.
Yep.
Is our review, 10th and April 14th, and May 12th is when we make our recommendation. The June 16th is the dead, drop dead day.
There's no other business, we'll close this meeting.
Everyone have, have a very happy holiday and a safe one.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, if I don't see you all or talk to you all.
Yeah, Merry Christmas all. Thank you, Matt.
See you, Matt.
Merry Christmas.
They had a trouble this time.
I'll try, Ann.
Thank you, Julie.
Going 61, yeah, yeah.